Now on channel eighteen news.
Uh.
Looking good. You raised a lot of money, didn't you, for Carroll County?
I don't, I haven't kept the report.
Oh, good. They probably kept all that too, if you count.
Probably.
Okay, it's a smidge after ten o'clock. We will initially open our public meeting for the two thousand twenty-three budget. If you all would stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I would like to introduce Mr. Paul Melfiessen, who is the minister at the Camden First Baptist Church. All of you who want to meet us in a quick word of prayer.
Thank you, Scott. Would you pray with me, please? Father, we are here gathered in your name, gathered in the authority, Lord, to make decisions for this county and what's benefit in the short term and the long term. We ask, Father, that you would give us wisdom in these matters. We just ask in overall blessings for your sake. May God that we be touched by you in all these decisions.
Thank you. Okay, as I stated, opening the public hearing for the two thousand twenty-three budget, I, at this time, would request any public comment? Seeing none, any comment from the council members? Hearing none, I give a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Paul Ryder, second by Ethan Brown, to close public hearing. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I have those, same sign. Motion carries six zero for the rocker. I would state that Tracy Martin is unavailable today. She has rhinitis and sinus infection, so she's got to double. Okay, we now will open the... Got to wait until ten to ten? Okay.
Stand up, Mike is open. Do you want anyone to? Mike, you want to sing?
I won't sing. And I can't say any jokes.
Oh, you can't.
Can he dance? Can I what? Can he dance? No.
Paul?
No, he don't want me to sing. I think I was supposed to stay over until, wasn't it? Give it up time for him to show up. We're reopening. Time to check your face, anybody? What I think is that ten local motions just state again that last hour, given the public comment, then go ahead.
Next, correct. We got our most exciting five years through yesterday, so we have more staff hiring. We have training on Wednesday, so that was a project. We have right at, I think it's sixty-two.
Yeah.
For security? We haven't ever hired. My friend Tom's coming out like that, but we, I have about fifteen new security crew right now. Oh, wait, I have one that is an all-American, like, Georgia University. He's six-eight and about four hundred square meters. So he's gonna be right at my front door instantly.
So, I've got your radio sitting by the front door to bring to you the truck radio. And I guess I'm done. And I guess we're gonna have to return the staff to them. Bob refuses to use it. And I'm kinda thinking, maybe I'll wanna use it with the ceiling. But I bet Bob will just get that done before I ever get off of this. Yeah. But we are getting closer. Yeah, the windows are in, and there are plastic things besides each window to allow the light in. And it's, you know, it's bubbled and stuff. And he has four more of those to put in today. And everything's stained. And I think the next thing is that, I'm not sure what we're gonna do with the floor. He wants to pour on that stuff that equals out, you know, that makes everything level. I have a problem with the cats. Because the cats like to go, you know? He said it's gotta be left alone for a baby. So... I think that's probably it. Gotta really dry.
You were on walking on it.
Yeah, yeah.
We got a little bit more concentrated.
Yeah. And then the carpeting goes down.
Oh, so you're putting, so maybe?
I, I don't know what he's doing. I don't know. He did, he hasn't said either one of the words you just said, so...
It's either that.
But...
It's either the biggest part in the end or the second biggest part in the end.
And then we start rubbing.
Jake Owen, that's supposed to be a screen for that college. Yeah, I'm old here. Right, Elliott Hall's gone away from doing it on the concerts pretty much, so they plan to pick that up.
Could it pretty go away from you and Contra when you're there?
Yeah, pretty well. They don't probably do anything there anymore.
Yeah, they're, oh, I don't like those three guys. Really scary for that big though.
Oh, yeah.
Willie Nelson probably come in.
Yeah.
Chris Lee, dude, he's dead.
Yep.
I never seen him. Have you got CDs left from Chris Lee? Oh, can I make him up to you?
I would like to, you know, the time has been, I'd like to state that this is the last call for any public comment concerning the two thousand twenty-three budget. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close.
We're gonna close the last.
You gotta close it twice. We don't look through the... Well.
Well, I can say that.
I've got a motion, a second. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I have those, same sign. Motion carries six zero. We now will open the regular September meeting of the Carroll County Council. Before you, you have the consent agenda. Is there anyone, anyone wish to pull from the consent agenda for further discussion? Hearing none, may I have a motion to accept the consent agenda that is presented? I have a motion, a second. Motion by Ethan Brown, second, by Paul Ryder, to accept the consent agenda that is presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I have those, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Okay, that brings us down to the review of financial reports. Quickly, and as I have typically done in the past, kind of give a quick rundown concerning general ledger, rainy day, et cetera. Currently, general ledger sits at six point eight million. Edit funds are at one million. Rainy day, three point five million. Riverboat, three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Correctional facility, we're at three point six million. Gold's that brings up about seventy-five, I think seventy-five thousand dollars each month. And the JL cap project sits at one million dollars. After eight months, everyone should be about sixty-six percent, or sixty-six percent through the year. Our overall usage in general ledger is sixty-one percent. We're sitting in really, really good shape. As far as my group goes, prosecutor sixty point six, commissioner fifty-eight, councils at fifty-five, EMS at six, sixty-one, and for the prosecutor at sixty-three. So my departments are sitting in really good shape. Tim?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Can you repeat the rainy day fund balance?
Rainy day fund, three point five.
Thank you. Okay, so EMA is at thirty-three percent year-to-date. I will draw your attention to the sixty thousand dollars that we put in for repeaters that has not been spent yet, correct?
Correct, it had.
Okay.
It's been ordered, but who knows?
Yeah, so that sits in there to throw that percentage utilization off. If you take the amended balance of one forty-six, one fifty-four, minus that sixty thousand, that leaves eighty-six thousand dollars, which would be a fifty-five point nine year-to-date budget utilization, which is more in line with where we'd be at for the year. So I just wanna call that out. Local road and street at fourteen percent year-to-date. MBH Fund eleven seventy-six is at forty-three point six two percent. Cume Bridge at thirty-four point three five percent year-to-date. Adult probation, supplemental adult probation at sixty-nine point one seven percent. And no issues with juvenile probation. So those are my departments, no, no real concerns.
Thank you. Doc?
My people are all well and good.
Ethan?
Everything's fine by the purpose.
All my departments are fine.
Josh? Recorder says they're all good, fifty-nine, seventy-four, fifty-seven, but the recorder, I had a question this some time ago. Reasoning recorder is seventy-four, she pays half. She pays half of her first deputy and what's the other one?
My heart timer.
Heart timer, half and half, but she pays her first half out of her fund or the second half out of the fund, and that's why it's so high this year. Gradually comes down towards the end of the year, but everything's well.
All right, very good. And we'll move on to the audit report. Beth?
I don't know where my bullets went, but anyway, I sent out the reports on September eighth, and I just wanted to know if there's any questions about them? And then, before I go through this other stuff here, the commissioners would like to have a joint meeting with the council on October seventeenth. That's a Monday at one o'clock about the Arthur money. We have received our second installation, our installment. So that makes our balance three point nine two one eight one two. So they have not received any more requests that you do not know about, okay?
Is it the seventh?
Seventeenth. Is that okay with everyone?
I will be out of town and would like to be at that meeting. I assume that's in connection with their regular scheduled commissioners meeting?
It'd be one o'clock, yeah.
Okay. Is there any reason why we couldn't push that back a couple weeks to the next commissioners meeting?
Which would be Monday or be October third.
I was, I was going in the other direction.
Oh, the other way?
Yeah.
Okay, I can ask them.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I can't drop those.
I'm guessing there's nothing urgent that we couldn't try and move it?
So can you be here what?
To be the thirty-first.
No, they have the next week.
Oh, just the next week, not two weeks, yes.
Or according to what their commissioners meeting is what you're saying?
Yeah.
I mean, I was just gonna throw out an alternative. We could have it the day of, the day of our council meeting.
I won't be here that day.
Oh, well, no.
I'm out that way.
Oh, I got you.
Yeah.
And then Thursdays aren't good for one of the commissioners.
I got you. So November the seventh, though, is also?
Is that okay with everyone? It's far enough out, but maybe you guys could try to, like, order me?
We're all good at November seventh.
Seven, seven. Seven. Doc, can you be here on a Monday at one o'clock, on November seventh?
Best I know.
Sorry?
Best I know.
Oh, I thought you said yes. Okay, and Tim, you say okay?
Yes.
Should I say maybe?
Maybe.
Or maybe. Or maybe.
Same time, more than one?
Yeah. I don't know if it's necessary. Do you wanna do a vote on that?
Well, actually, it's the commissioners' call. They asked for it, so I have to.
Oh, I see, okay.
A mercy from you, it doesn't matter. You can.
I don't know if it's necessary.
Yeah, I don't think we need to, just kind of put this out there.
The only thing that we have spent, I was just gonna say spent out there is the farms in Farnburg, you know, the, the big, every month, ten men. We just got a personal bill from the EMS that is not falling out of the two hundred and thirty-two that's out. You'll do that in, in the months.
Yeah, I spoke with Doug yesterday, as a matter of fact. He said, you know, that some of the auto lifts that we worked on a couple of months ago are beginning to burn. The actual lifts themselves aren't in yet. He said, once, once they get in and get one installed, you know, let us all take a look at it and see how it works.
And the other thing I have amended, version three for August eighteenth, and I'm gonna pass those out.
Let's clear that.
I like that. I almost put a different color, that might throw you off.
I don't want that.
So I, you have already voted to amend it. I, but I probably should have a signed copy of the page on the back, so one of you wanna sign?
You'll need to start one. Here you go.
Here's one to sign. And I'll get one to Tracy. So we're gonna vote on that again, or we just? We, I, I do the agenda.
You voted on it, and this is just a?
Just a signature.
Yeah.
So the next thing I have is a new page for your books. It's a page, the last page is gonna be page seventy. I made a change from, it shouldn't have come right out of the dispersments. It should have came out of the coordinator. Just little things like that that I'm trying to find to, to correct. And so this is just a correction that I found at the end.
So you just moved from the five thousand nine to the one thousand?
This is for the twenty-three budget book?
Right. No voting, Tim. I will tell you the county general budgets that they paid to turn in, and advertised on Gateway, is nine million four hundred and seventy-four thousand one hundred and eighty-four. And the total budgets ended up being twenty million six twenty-five, six seventy-eight. Correct.
Good morning, gentlemen. On the agenda, it says riverboat, but we were mistaken. It was actually taken out of rainy day. So when the, the agreement was made to purchase the building down there for a five cottage, we needed to get a sign for it. I've been talking to commissioners since June about different signage, whether electronic or just a basic sign. I went and got estimates. I never got the full quote, just because getting a formal quote, things are constantly changing. At their last meeting, based off the estimates of an electronic sign being twenty-five thousand dollars, I said, that's not, that's not even feasible right now, plus it's, it's gonna up the electric bill, which I don't even have one to take care of. The estimate for a regular sign was right around two thousand dollars. So in discussions with them, they asked me to come in and ask you guys if we could use the remaining money that was left in the purchase to cover the cost of the sign. And then there was some wiring work that had to get done as well. When they put the internet in, that outdoor wired product, we could use that also to cover the cost of that.
Almost eight hundred dollars. And I will help them. The balance is three thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents in the rainy day one. That was foredoing.
Okay.
After.
Appropriated, nobody, for the purchase of the building. I know that there was some, I don't know, one hundred and five thousand five hundred.
It was three hundred and twenty-five thousand, and we didn't have, haven't been able to solve that.
Can I make a motion to reduce the thirty-five better than eighty-three dollars for the sign and additional electrical work that we accomplished of the new building? So I have a question. Well, we've got a motion on the floor, so we've got a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, discussion. That'll be over.
Is this sign gonna require lights if it's two thousand dollars?
I'll just get some solar lights on it. I'll just put some solar lighting on it. Like, I think Doug has solar lighting on his and all the ambulance garages, so there wouldn't be any cost.
Do you have, do you have an estimate? Like, do you have something?
An estimate was, it was right at two thousand dollars, but they said they wouldn't give me a hard number because of price changes and that. And that was a month and a half ago.
And who, who are you working with?
Eagle Customs was the one out there on seventy-five that I worked with, and I reached out to Clifford out of Kokomo as well. And if, if I shrunk down the size of the sign, that would change the price as well, which I, I might go a little bit smaller than the four by eight, which would bring the price down.
Is that including, like, installing it?
Doug bring it.
Setting it?
Not setting it. That's completely assembled, and then I'd set it in, there would be an additional cost if they set it. And that, but that's just digging, you know, a couple holes, three foot deep, and put a quick creek in there and let it set.
So if, if the estimate was two thousand dollars and the wiring was eight hundred dollars, that's twenty-eight hundred.
Right.
And you're asking for thirty-five?
Totally. And if we don't use it, we don't use the, the total amount. I just wanted to get.
I'd like to amend my motion to include, to use, to use any additional money that's left over. That pointed out, there might be a couple more hundred dollars come up here and there. And so I'd like to amend my motion to include, to be used for other expenses that are part of the, that's.
Well, I'm just also thinking that if he has put out the utilities, his budget is getting thin. And at the end of the year, he needs to pay fifty bucks on electricity. He might have to do that, or if the, the sign comes in, just to tap that bigger. I don't know. What do you think?
I don't know what your question is.
My question is?
My motion is to amend it and just use it, kind of, for...
There's, there's a financial number, what's the one they want?
Thirty-five hundred.
Yeah, thirty-five.
But I didn't put that in motion.
How about what your original motion was?
Yeah, that's, that's true.
To use it for any expenses.
Yeah, I just wanted that to be in the motion that you could use that, up to thirty-five hundred plus dollars for things being fulfilled building this year.
I guess procedurally, I don't understand why we don't have a copy of an estimate, like, why we don't have a breakdown of cost. Like, we would generally ask for that. I mean...
Well, I can go get it. I'll go get a solid quote and wait another month, that's fine with me. I just, I didn't wanna go get the quote.
You guys appropriated a hundred and twenty-five thousand for purchase. We're just coming back because there's money here, still in that line, but we can't. In my world, I can't just spend it because it's not a purchase of a building. It is the, goes along with the purchase of a building, but it's not, I'm just trying to cover tracks here.
Understood.
It's not initially for the purchase of that particular building.
I can go get it.
I, I mean, like, for me, I'm not opposed to a sign out there, and I'm not opposed to using that money to... That's not the issue. The issue is just the process and, like, wanting to know what the breakdown in cost is and...
Right.
You know what I mean?
And I understand that. That's why I, I've gone out and gotten quotes and quotes and quotes and quotes for other things, and nothing's ever gone through. So I just reached out to these companies and said, hey, what's an estimate on this? And they emailed me back. I mean, I could dig through my emails and show you the email, what their estimate was. But I didn't wanna get a quote and have it hanging out there for nine months. You know, exaggerating, nine months.
The bill that I brought up is not an estimate, it's eight hundred dollars.
But that is, it's a hard one, that's always.
The keepers cabling that did wiring out there for the, I believe it was the emails and just other electrical.
It was the wiring for the Wi-Fi.
I did not bring in the bill, but it's exactly eight hundred dollars.
But I, I will get the quote. I'll have them actually do a vote and bring it back to them next week.
Can we call for a vote? Can I call for a vote? Well... Why not? Just why not?
Call for questions.
Call for questions.
Call for questions is a limit debate.
Okay. Okay, call for question. We have a motion on the floor to appropriate three thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars for the purchase of the sign. And that includes an eight hundred dollar bill for internet that we currently have that is due.
But what line does that go into then? Does that go into a line in his budget?
It goes in, no, it's just right there in the rainy day.
So it doesn't go to him and then out? It goes straight to?
Goes straight to.
Okay, right.
And it's not to approve payment, it's already been paid. And when I was going through the Cleaver bills... And it's not to approve payment, it's already been paid, and when I was going through the Cleaver bills, I saw that we had paid that. So I mean, it's already been paid, I just wanna make a correction to that line.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six, zero.
So you get a quote, bring it back next one.
Uh, you can just, you can just do it.
That, you know, you're. Mike, you're approved, but that would be greatly appreciated, I, I think that's probably.
Okay.
I'm gonna give it to Doug then.
Okay.
Mr. Schumacher?
Morning.
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 Come for you for a request to amend the salary ordinance. We currently have two supervisor operator supervisor positions. One of those supervisors is going on FMLA leave, so I'd like to have a third position while he's on leave. When he gets back, we'll reduce him back to the truck driver, so it'll come from our existing positions. So the difference in pay between a truck driver is nineteen thirty-four, and the formula is twenty-eighty-eight, so it's dog fifty-four an hour, sixty-one sixty a week, it'd be a total for every month for fourteen weeks, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty cents more.
But you're not paying the other person, right? Because you don't have the冯莱.
Correct.
Okay, so there's no, there's no additional cost?
Right.
Well, he has vacations and.
Yes, if I, he's.
So there will, will be some payment to him.
You're not on sick time when you're on FMLA?
You have to use your supply.
That's what I'm saying. Right, so that's what I'm saying.
When he runs out of his time, there will not be any pay, but he has time to be paid for. What was that, eighteen more?
If you want for a full fourteen weeks, it'd be eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty cents additional.
Okay. Eight hundred and sixty-two dollars a month.
For the fourteen weeks.
Forty cents?
Yeah, forty cents, yes. It's sixty-one sixty a week at forty hours. And we have current funds in our salary budget to cover all this, because I've been operating shorthanded.
So where are we transferring from?
It would be from truck driver line to supervisor line.
We don't need a transfer of that.
I would say not yet.
No, I'm just saying, that's why he's requesting.
Is this a true salary ordinance change?
Yes.
Because we're adding a third position for, like, a temporary position. While he's on FMLA, so I, so I'll have three people listed as supervisor as opposed to two driver.
So we'll have to change it now and then change it back after.
Yeah, we can do that. Next, I'll be threatened. Request to amend salary rules to, to, field operations position, while the supervisor is on FMLA.
Okay, we have a motion to amend salary, third supervisor, if I had. Is that temporary?
Yeah.
And is that the same rate as a supervisor, I mean, I'm.
Yeah, it'll be the same thing.
What's the, what's the effective date?
Uh, I think he's going in October third. So I'm not sure when he finishes up his vacation, sick day, but it'll be, it'll make an effect about November first.
When, when is he assuming the whole? Your truck driver is going to management, when is he assuming?
When the other one leaves for surgery, so it would be probably October third.
You wouldn't wanna make it before then?
October.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six, zero.
Thank you.
Can I, you'll stick around for a little bit?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that brings us down to the three additionals. Sheriff on the maintenance for four thousand five hundred fifty-three, the direction, facilities, ten thousand, Sonic two thousand fifty, and recorder, collective officials training, fifty hundred dollars. Those were all, the requests were all printed on the reports that, that had sent out. Are there any, I mean, just anyone wish to hear from Sheriff? I will, so what, what, is that for engine repair, transmission repair, something?
No.
No?
What this is, just to clarify, is, this is to cover repairs from one of our vehicles that was involved in an accident. And so this, that specific amount, this in there, is what the insurance company has paid the county already, and so typically, they've not been consistent, I'll put it that way, because sometimes they will send me the check to me, or actually to collisions and flora, where we have our work done, and pay them directly. This particular fund, it came directly to the county. And so what I'm asking is that, rather than that money, the left in County General is to apply for, because I got an invoice in hand from collisions for payment of that, that work.
You're lucky, or did you just send it to collisions?
Exactly. Yeah. So.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll just approve the, yeah, sheriff's addition.
Doug? Got a motion and a second to approve four thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars and sixty-five cents for on the maintenance for the sheriff, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries six, zero. And I guess go ahead.
Can I say something? See, like, this one right here, there's not really that non-normative maintenance, that's the kind of things that I'm trying to catch throughout the budgets, that really should be a four thousand line, so next year, we will start doing it as a four thousand line, because that's a capital upgrade that you're. I mean, yes, they're fixing, fixing the vehicle, I mean, vehicles should not be coming out of there, so, anyway.
Even though we'd already received the insurance check, we technically were speaking.
Is there buying a vehicle or going back into maintenance?
It's already in the maintenance line, I'm doing it not like that, I mean, next year, like anything, when we purchase vehicles.
I agree with you on that, I'm just saying, what's the distance?
It's, it's, is it to fix? Yeah.
So that's correct, I mean, three thousand is as an operational, four thousand is a capital.
I understand.
I'm, I'm just, I'm asking.
Yes, it is.
I still do not have, I still have three bills, so one was submitted to court, one was submitted through my email, and a second one was submitted to the court, so I still do not know what the actual fees are, but that will be the most that I will use, I may not even use the whole two thousand fifty. I just asked for the MAC, I took the highest bill and asked for the difference, just to make sure I discovered it.
Okay, and this was on the court?
Yes, this was on the civil court.
This one?
Yes.
Motion to transfer the fifteen hundred dollars for the. This is, this is the election.
This is the state election board.
Election board.
Election board.
Two thousand fifty. Oh. The legal, I'm sorry, yeah, that's my motion, the election board. Two thousand fifty. As an additional.
All second session.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to provide additional legal fees, two thousand fifty dollars. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question, why are we doing an additional on this, and why didn't you seek a transfer?
Um, I have no money for the transfer, you took in the twenty-twenty-two budget, you cut ten thousand dollars of my legal line out, which dropped me below in order to pay any legal.
How long have you been a clerk?
Appointed or elected?
I.
I was elect, I was caucus back in in October of twenty-twenty.
So this is your second year, okay.
This is my first budget year.
Okay.
Cali would, Cali did the twenty-twenty-one budget.
Okay. I, I didn't look at the utilization, but I, I, when you say your budget was cut, I don't think that's reflective of the real situation.
You cut a ten thousand dollar legal.
There's a line was reduced.
You took the entire ten thousand dollar budget for legal out, cut my budget, you removed it. Yeah, I had four thousand dollar line and a ten thousand dollar line, you removed the ten thousand.
Right. There was money, your budget, your budget is a number of, a number of lines, has never been utilized in many years. So what I'm saying, why.
I don't know which line you have.
I, I'm saying the overall budget has not been utilized to a hundred percent. So a, a two thousand dollar transfer would be appropriate, or, and I'll give you an example, let's say, your, your total budget is a hundred and forty-eight thousand? No, excuse me. I'm sorry. Let's just take a random number, let's say it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, your budget utilization historically has been a hundred and twenty-five, I'm making sense up. That means that every year, you're reverting twenty-five thousand dollars that's not spent. So that overall budget figure, the intent is for you to be able to transfer within your budget, like every other department does, or like you would for your clerk's budget, to cover those expenses before we do an additional appropriation.
I don't know what line I, I would transfer out of. Um, I can tell you right now, two of my line items, I'm gonna have to transfer into those line items. The mailers that we sent out to every registered voter in twenty nineteen, which was the last normal election, that cost was thirty-two hundred, this year, to send out for the primary was fifty-six hundred. And I was, I did not budget that correctly, because I was basing it on the prior, you know, I didn't realize the cost of paper and all of that was gonna substantially almost double. So that one line item that I've got for printing, that Q Graphics sends out for us, I'm gonna have to transfer money into that line to cover the general election mailers that were sent out. But that election budget from twenty-twenty budget to twenty-twenty-two budget was cut by twenty-eight thousand dollars across the board.
Yeah.
In twenty-twenty-one, there was no election, so there was no budget for twenty-twenty-one. There's, there was no election, so, or twenty, yeah, twenty-twenty-one, there was no, there was a few line items I remember which they worked at, but, I mean, the council was open, but there was not hardly anything used out of the twenty-twenty-one, because it was a non-election year.
And, and there is a difference, there's a material difference between a presidential election year and interim election, correct? In terms of expense?
As in twenty nineteen versus twenty-twenty?
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty-twenty election.
Yes.
Twenty-twenty-two election, there's, there's a difference between a presidential election year and.
As far as expenses go, no, I still need the same amount of people, the ballots are still, I mean, you still have the same number of ballots, nothing changes, other than maybe the quantity of people that are on a ballot. But those expenses do, none of those expenses change, the election support line does not change.
What was your budget utilization in the twenty-twenty budget?
I don't know, I wasn't, I wasn't here for the twenty-twenty, I, I don't know.
I, I would be. I, I think that, that your attitude in saying that it was cut, in, in general, it is trying to say that, you know, things are, that you have less money available, that might be true, but if, if you have had, if the budget has not been utilized, it's not cut, because you can still, you, that's still, the money is there, you need to do the job. It might require a transfer internally, but the money is appropriated to do the work, I mean, we don't.